One.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order at five thirty P M. First, and now I'd like to call on Councilor Corin to do the land acknowledgement, please.
I'd like to acknowledge that the rural municipality of Saint Andrews is located on Tree One territory, the traditional lands of the Anishinaabe, Cree, Ojibwe Cree, Dakota, and Geni peoples, and the national homeland of the Red River Métis. We respect the spirit and intent of treaties and treaty making and are committed to working in partnership with First Nations, Inuit and Métis people in the spirit of truth, reconciliation, and collaboration.
Thank you. Next item, adoption of agenda, motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Could I have a mover, please?
I'm moving.
Counselor Hunt, seconded by Counselor Morecki. All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie. Next item, we have a delegation, Ms. Collins from Monk Goodwin, and indemnity briefing. Welcome, Ms. Collins. Could you proceed, please?
Marisol, can I just put an intro into this?
Sure.
So Jackie Collins and I were talking on the phone and talked about the first, first time that she was in front of council, was in camera, and she had a, some concerns on how things tied together with what was in the act and what the policy meant and, and reasons why we should have a policy. So we agreed that she would come and not be in camera tonight, and, and, and address those general items.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Also, I'll proceed. We have before us, there's a draft of the indemnification of mayor and council staff and volunteers' legal cost policy. And the purpose of that policy is to establish a policy for indemnification, for members of council, mayor and members of council, municipal employees, and also volunteers, regarding costs that could arise for civil, criminal, or administrative actions and proceedings. So this is meant to address situations in which someone, whether it's a council member, employee is being sued and they're responsible for legal costs. There are provisions under the municipal act which allow for indemnification in certain circumstances if certain, criteria are met for that. And so the purpose of this policy is to have something in place to address that. And so there's a number of reasons why it's helpful for council to have a specific policy in place for this. The first thing is that council and staff will know where to look if this issue arises. It's an issue that doesn't arise, frequently, but it does arise from some, from time to time. And so the idea is to have it in a written policy under one location, that sets out what the purpose of the policy is and sets out what the actual policy is itself. And so, I mean, it may be times, there may be some time between when these occasions arise, but at this point, the policy would be in place, and council, mayor and council would know where to look to address this issue. Another reason to have a policy in place on this is just the transparency of it. If there's a policy, it would be something that would be on the R M's website. It would be something available for the public, as public citizens of the municipality, as well as prospective council members and employees and volunteers. They'd be able to look at that and know that they would all be treated the same if this issue came up and that they're all entitled to the benefit of this policy. So that's another benefit of having an actual policy in place. And it would be publicly available at that point. The public would be able to review it on the R M website and decide if they were willing to take on the personal risk that could be involved if they ran for council. And they would be understanding that would be indemnification in certain circumstances, at least if they either ran for council, worked for council, or volunteered. So part of the point behind indemnification policies is to ensure that municipalities can attract qualified people and people that are interested in being committed to serving on council or acting as, as employees for the R M. So that's, you know, just a few of the reasons why it's helpful to have a specific policy in place. If there's a written policy in place, people know in advance if this issue is going to arise, how they would be dealt with. So this policy addresses a number of sections under the municipal act dealing with indemnification. The first one is under the indemnification on successful defense. And so that arises where a council member or an employee or a volunteer is, is being sued, and they'll be paid for reasonable costs incurred in a civil, criminal, or administrative action that's commenced as a result of something they've done in their functions. If they're substantially successful on the merits. And so that's a requirement that they will be indemnified, but council has to keep in mind under the policy, it's, it's talking about reasonable costs. And so that's something that, that has to be established, that the costs are reasonable. So that's, that follows generally section four oh four one of the Act. There's, the paragraph number three is the discretion to indemnify, and that's allowing for a discretion to indemnify, where there's legal costs that arise again from a civil, criminal, or administrative proceeding, arising from something of functions of, of a council member or an employee, as long as they acted in good faith. And then there is a distinction if it's a criminal or administrative proceeding that's enforced by a monetary penalty, then the person has to have reasonable grounds for believing that was lawful. And then the other section that's dealt with is under paragraph four, and that, that's section four, it's based on section four oh four three of the Conflict of Interest Act, and that's indemnifying a member of council or council committee, municipal officer, or volunteer worker, if for their costs involved in defending an application by or on behalf of the municipality under the municipal Council Conflict of Interest Act. But that's if they satisfy the court, they acted in good faith. The other section under the municipal act, which I don't have included in this draft policy, which council might want to consider too, would be related to disqualification proceedings. And that's under a totally different section of the Act that's, that's quite a bit earlier on in the Act, that starts under section ninety five. And when we get to section ninety seven of that, that provides that if an application disqualified, disqualification application dismissed, then the council may reimburse the person for costs and expenses that council considers responsible or reasonable. So that's another section that council may want to consider putting in it too, so that all of the provisions dealing with indemnification are dealt with in one, in one area. And so that's something that, that council might want to consider having added in. So council has to keep in mind that the, the policy in place is always subject to reasonableness. This is always the test. And so if it's found that costs are not reasonable, then, then that's something that council would be looking at, with only award indemnification to the extent it's reasonable, and if the other requirements under the Act have been met. And so generally, it's a benefit of the R M to have the policy in, in one place, so that there's transparency and certainty for no matter who's applying for indemnification, whether it is a council member, employee, or volunteer. And so that's, that's just meant to be a benefit to the R M and of attracting people and retaining people, so that they know that they will be covered off. You know, rather than having to pay legal costs out of their own pocket if, if they meet the criteria under the policy.
Okay, thank you. Council members, do you have any other, do you have questions at this point of Ms. Collins? Counselor Feeblecorn, as again, it's, you're all, the ones in chambers, you're very tiny to see. So you may have to speak, because I can't see if you raise your hand. But I think, Councilor Feeblecorn, you had your hand up.
Yes. Who determines reasonableness?
Council does. So when it's considering it, it'll look at the, the costs and determine whether, you know, they think the time spent was reasonable or not. And usually dispersments are something that are pretty standard. So I don't think there'd be much of an issue arising on that. But for legal costs, it's something that council determines that's reasonable or not.
Then my second question is, I know we went over this before, but in terms of this draft policy, everything within this policy is covered under the municipal act. So whether we had this policy or not, everything is still, everything that's included in this policy is already part of the, sorry, the municipal's act. Is that correct?
That's correct. But, but as I say, there is the one section that, that isn't included in this that I want to consider is, is dealing with the disqualification principles, which is in a totally different section of the Act than the rest of the indemnification parts. And so that's, if you had a policy, then it would be dealing with all of the indemnifications under the Act. And so that would be a benefit, just because it would be the only one place to look, and, and no one would have to be searching around municipal to determine how indemnification worked and when it was applicable.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, council, any further, council members, any further questions? Deputy Mayor Dornvoss.
Um, I just want some clarification on this as well. If myself, as a plaintiff, was going to sue the R M, I pay for that out of my own pocket, correct? The, the R M is not paying for my plaintiff.
That's correct, yeah, yeah.
I have a question too, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, please.
So, so part of what I've been gathering, talking to council, is, is why do we need an indemnification policy if it's in the Act? And so what's, what's my, my roadmap to get to where that is in the Act? That would be my concern as the C A O. So what's in the Act? How do I get there to have council make a decision? And, and and how do I get it on the table? So that's what I would be looking for as the C A O, is lead me to how I get this onto the council agenda.
Right. So if you have a policy in place, then it's something that's brought to council pursuant to this policy. And so that's already set up. And so it's, it's ready to go if you already have it in place. Whereas if, if you don't, then you would be dealing with that on an ad hoc basis and having to go back through this issue over and over again, instead of saying, well, there's policy and that deals with it. And that's how we get it before council.
Yeah. And, and I'd be concerned about, you know, if it, if it's controversial, right? Or if there's, if it's a split council on it, who's going to champion bringing it to the table? And, and if it's as things change and you get different administration in, and someone that's not as familiar, like, that would be my concern as C A O. How do I get it on the table so council can look at it?
Yeah. And that's why you have the policy, so that council does have it readily available. It can just go through its policies. And there's the policy on indemnification. And everyone's treated equally, whether it is an employee, a volunteer, or a council member. It's, it's available for all of them. And, and everyone knows that it's applicable to all of them. No one has to go searching under the municipal act to find out the different provisions. Like I say, the disqualification part is a totally different part than the other indemnification parts. And so it's all in one package available and for the continuity of council and, and for the C A O and, and staff members too, so that they have it. They don't have to go searching and readdressing this and reinventing the wheel every time this issue comes up.
Okay, Counselor Hunt?
Please explain number five, the insurance. Explain that paragraph.
So that's just confirming that the council can purchase and maintain insurance for the benefit of people. And so because you have insurance in place, though, insurance doesn't call, cover absolutely everything. There would be some potential criminal type of activities, or administrative activities, or even civil for that matter, that your insurance wouldn't cover. So, I mean, insurance would be the first place that we would be looking for in terms of coverage. But if, if insurance isn't in place because of some exclusion under the policy, then, then there's still an ability for indemnification.
Well, why would one insurance cover what you said might not be covered by one insurance company? Why would another insurance company cover it?
Well, there's different exclusions under insurance policies. And so that's the, the, the use is to cover off when there aren't, aren't insurance coverages. Like I know Brent, last time we met too, you made reference to a situation where there wasn't coverage under an insurance policy. And I mean, that's the problem with insurance policies, or the issue with insurance policies, is they do have exclusions. And there's, there's no way of, of saying, there's no insurance you can buy in the world that's going to cover every single scenario.
Yeah. So I'll, I'll just jump in. My experience had been that, and, and talking to a, a, to the legal counsel involved with insurance company, with Western Financial, they said, you know, they said, you're insured as long as the insurance company agrees that you're insured, but at any time, they could pull the coverage on you. And, you know, and, and I asked for something in writing, and they said, they would not give it in writing, because at any time, the insurance company decides, we're no longer covering you, then it's up to you to, to dispute that with the insurance company. So the lawyers from the insurance company, and if your R M doesn't have an indemnification policy, if there's a dispute, then it's up to you, is the counselor, the volunteer, or the administrative person to get your own lawyer. And you have to go and dispute the insurance company and pay for your lawyer, disputing why the insurance company should pay for it. And you, you, you're, you're going against, let's call it corporate America. And, and, and it's you, the C A O, or the volunteer from the community club. It's up against a team of corporate lawyers that say, we're not covering you.
Yeah. And, and the thing is, often insurance companies do take the most restrictive view of how they interpret their policies. And, and you're right. Then you get in a fight with them about whether there's coverage or not in that particular circumstance, which can be something that, you know, you could be into pretty heavy legal fees by the time you're dealing with that, with the insurance company on, whether they're right or wrong in terms of their, their interpretation of their policy.
Counselor Hunt?
Oh, I appreciate what you're, that scenario or not, but is there any guarantee that another insurance company will insure, like for that, whatever that is that you're wanting the insurance for? There's, there's no guarantee that another insurance company will, will indemnify you as well. And my next question is, will this indemnification policy help us with our current insurer?
In, in what way do you mean? Will it help you with your current insurer?
Well, you're saying with this indemnification policy that it helps define things for the insurer. So we have an insurer now that does insure us for these exact things. So with indemn, because you said without the indemni, without the indemnification policy, you don't have that guarantee. So if we do have an indemnification policy, will that help us with our current insurance provider?
Well, the indemnification is to cover situations where the insurer doesn't provide coverage for whatever reason, because they have exclusions under their policy. So it's intended to cover those situations. If your insurance policy applies, you know, then, then there wouldn't be a need to turn to this. But like I say, there are many exclusions under insurance policies. So then you could wind up in a situation where you're not covered under your insurance. You can't get insurance for that type of scenario. Like insurance doesn't cover absolutely everything. And so the policy is to deal with situations where there isn't insurance in place because of an exclusion, or because of a dispute about coverage with an insurance company too.
Would we know how much this insurance is going to cost?
You're, you're not buying other insurance. Your indemnification policy is for, for the municipality to say, to the volunteer, or the administrator, or the counselor, you know.
The R M's going to pay for it.
The R M would pay for it, right? Because it's not a blanket policy from whether it's Western investors or whoever. They don't have a blanket policy where they just roll it out and go, oh, don't worry, you're covered. What a pleasant surprise it would be for you if you, you did something, and I'm going to use our planner, because he does stuff all the time, making different calls with, with developers. And, 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 and he's doing his job, and he's, he's doing something. And eight years down the road, you know, he gets into a, there's a dispute about something he is, he or she has done. And, and, and the insurer goes, well, that's covered. And now you've got, you know, a surprise where you were doing your job, and there's no blanket policy. And the insurer says, I'm not covering you. At least the R M would be able, the R M would be able to, the R M lawyer would be able to look at that and dispute that claim with the insurance company, or in fact, follow up. And you can have a, an R M lawyer at the table with you if there's a dispute of, of that matter. Is that, Jackie, does that sound reasonable, what I said?
Yeah, yeah, that's it. It's exactly what the policy is intended to cover, those types of scenarios, yeah.
Counselor Sliker, you had your hand up?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of questions. So to put this policy in play means that we are, should a situation arise, the taxpayer is on the hook with taxpayer's money. Am I correct on that first question?
Well, it would be funds of the R M, whatever the source of these funds is, that would be.
Okay. And the second thing is, do you work for an insurance company, or?
Do I?
Yeah.
I've done work for insurance companies, but I don't generally work for an insurance company. I work for plaintiffs. I work for insurance brokers. I work for insurance companies. I, I don't have any one particular area. But I mean, I've certainly had claims against insurance companies. And, and like I say, I can speak to how they exclude, they want to exclude things sometimes. And then you do get into a dispute about whether that exclusion applies or not. So I mean, there's a lot of case law. If you look at case law, there's a lot of case law in Manitoba, and every jurisdiction in Canada with insurers, you know, taking a certain position, and the person that's insured taking a different position. So.
Okay. I, I, I think I, I, I appreciate the conversation today, but I would like to hear from our actual Western Financials. As A M M owns that policy, and it is brought to as a blanket policy for all of the hundred and, what is it, thirty seven municipalities that belong to A M M. So I think before we go any further, we should invite them to the table as well, and A M M, if that needs to be required. Because it's my understanding of this policy that if, if, as the C A O stated, if the, someone got mad at the planning boy, for example, sorry, Braden, we're just going to use you for example tonight again. Insurance, the insurance should cover Braden, is my understanding of what I.
How would you like to be in Braden's shoes and be told, oh, don't worry, it should cover you? Or, or a counselor's shoes, and, and you say, oh, don't worry, if, if this is your words, it should cover you. I, I wouldn't be that confident.
Okay, well, I wasn't quite done talking yet, but I get where you're going. Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I mean, for Western Financial, I've heard a statement before from someone that said a specific individual in this room was covered, and then later said, well, that wasn't necessarily so was, they said it, but it wasn't necessarily true, right? So we've got to watch what we say.
Okay. And then I would, I would like to again suggest that we bring them in and have a conversation with them as well. Thank you.
If I could just clarify for everyone, in discussion with Donna Cox, we're all familiar with, um, she is in a conversation with Western Financial, no longer are they covering insured against insured. And she got that direct from Western Financial. I don't see any reasoning why A M M would be involved in this. They don't own Western Financial. As you stated, Counselor Sliker, Western Financial is the insurance provider.
I understand. I, I understand what state it was, the insurance policy is owned by A M M through Western Financial.
Okay, I'm not used to. That's not the right terminology, but I understand what you're trying to say. But just so you're aware, there is no longer coverage for insured against insured.
Well, that's going to be interesting, yeah. Because then whenever there's a disqualification type of thing, then the person would never be covered on that basis. So that's exactly an example where indemnification policy would be the only thing to assist them then.
That's exactly right, Ms. Collins. Whatever this policy is, I believe is needed, because this could happen to anybody. And that's why I was so shocked when Donna told me that. And I have the email that from, she had received from Western Insurance, that there is no longer coverage. That was recently changed.
Yeah. And that's the thing with insurance, is they can always change their policies. I mean, you often get notifications attached to your policy each year saying, these are the changes to the policy from year to year. And so there isn't a guarantee that just because something's covered one year, that still be covered the following year.
That's one hundred percent. Yep. Counselor members, do you have any other questions? Counselor.
Counselor Hunt can go first. I think it's a great idea, but my fear of this is, it's, it's another form of downloading. You know, we talk about R C M P downloading to R M's and that, and then we're covered. Highways downloading certain things that they're responsible for. And if we have this indemnification policy in place, the insurance company is going to look at it and say, oh, we don't have to insure them, because they're, you could call this self-insured, because that's exactly what this is. It's the definition for it, is self-insured. So yes, it is self-insured, because who's paying for it? We are. So it's like, we're self-insuring ourselves. It's, insurance company is going to say naturally, no, we're not covering you because of this reason. They're going to find more of a reason not to cover you, because then we're self-insuring ourselves at the residence expenses. I'd like to see that email that you're, I didn't really understand what you were saying there, Marisol, about Western Financial not covering somebody or not insuring no more. So if you could share more of that with us at later date, I'd appreciate that.
Okay, I'll talk to Donna for permission to share her email. I will probably copy and paste her. I've heard do that. But because there's other information in there that I don't believe should be shared with our council. It doesn't relate to our council. But I will definitely get a copy and send that to all of council. Somebody else had their hand up? Deputy Mayor Dornvoss.
So I look at this policy. I like the policy. I think that every counselor and mayor, deputy mayor should be aware and should take this seriously, that if something ever happens in the, in the, in the future, such as the example with Braden, where all of a sudden someone says, hey, we're going to sue the R M, and you've got no backing, and you've got significant investments, you've got a family, you've got a car, you've got a house, and you've got corporate America coming after you because of, of a lawsuit, you will be destroyed. And it wasn't worth it to not put a policy forward like this. Just saying.
Thank you. You summed it up in a good way, an understandable way, I trust. Does anybody else have any comments? Or Ms. Collins, do you have anything further to add?
I don't have anything further. I mean, I don't think that the insurance companies would look at that and say, well, we're going to deny, because I mean, they still have to have a basis for it. But, but that's the thing, is they tend to take a restrictive view of things. So and that's whether there's a policy in place or not, that's just how they create. And I don't think the policy would be something that they would look at and, and choose to interpret policies differently. I mean, they just do that on their own without having indemnification policy in front of them.
Exactly. I agree wholeheartedly with what the C A O said. This just, he has concerns as a C A O how to handle the matter. And this basically set, sets out exactly the steps that could be taken. Counselor Hunt?
Well, like I said, I appreciate Counselor Dornvoss's comments and, and, and their, and this policy or indemnification. But I still think we need Western Financial, their legal department, to come here and explain that to us, that that they're not covering something, or they are covering something, or there are new rules that they have in place now that, that has been set. And, and before we go any further, and, and have that, have that discussion with them. Or have them tell us that. May not be a discussion, but that if, with that information, and we can ask questions, same with what we're doing here right now.
Any further comments? Brent, do you have anything further to add?
No, I, I would say if you, if you need to think about, I, I mean, to drill down on this, I think everyone has a, an experience of their own, or someone they know where there was hail, and your roof was damaged, but the insurance company decides you're not covering you. You know, your fence was damaged, an auto insurance claim where, where they deny you the coverage. You'll have experiences or know of someone that had an experience where a decision is made based out of control, where, where people feel very passionately that they should have been covered. But, but your house insurance, or your car insurance said, no, we're not covering you. And where did that leave you? Where do you go? How do you defend yourself? How much is it going to cost you to move forward? So when we're thinking about, when we hear a statement, well, you know, the, the Western Financial is going to cover you, how you could bring this into your own experiences, think of other insurance companies with someone, may have Uh, how you could bring this into your own experiences, think of other insurance companies with someone may have been you or that you know. Or they weren't covered and is something as basic as, uh, you know, your home insurance or car insurance.
Thank you. Council members, okay. Do you have any further questions? Any further comments?
I guess just to comment, I just, just comment to that. And I, yeah, we've all been down that road where something's not, not. Covered. And then that comes back to self-insure them. Like I say, I have to pay, we have to pay for that out of our own, out of our own pocket then. But then there's an appeal process with that also that you can appeal through your insurance, whether it be your roof or your car. And, 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 and appeal process. And then if you lose that, then you're self-insured, you're, you're covering it yourself.
Yeah. Well, I would rather work than at another municipality that has an indemnification policy. And I'm sure that, that, uh, other people would, would say the same thing for administration. And you may lose some people that want to run for council because you're basically, uh, putting that out there, uh, for risk. And I would feel more comfortable at least knowing, uh, you know, that you could sit down with. With your, uh, legal counsel from the RM and at least discuss your case and your options and what you need to do. Rather than, uh, cast out the counselor or a deputy mayor and say, uh, well, you know. Too bad you're on your own here because.
Fair, fair, fair point.
And, and you know, and it's going to be a $70,000 bill or a $50,000 bill or a $10,000 bill.
Do we know how many other RMs have this indemnification policy? Is there any?
Yeah, yeah. But there's a few. I, I, there is an indemnification policy in West St. Paul.
Okay. And is it the same as this, like worded the same?
I think we based it on that one.
Okay. Thank you.
So it's, it's, it's not about, uh. It's about a safety net for employees, uh, especially, uh, you know, a volunteer in a community club or. Firefighter or those type of things. It, it's more of a safety net to direct you on what actions and what you could do to. Uh, to cover yourself and, and have some assistance when you, you know, when you have an issue.
Yeah. And when your insurance isn't going to cover it or is going to give you a hard time about covering it. Yeah.
Counselor Schlecker?
When would this, uh, if this policy did go into play, when would it be effective for like, it would be covering everything going forward or? Or where would the ramp, like where would the parameters for that be?
Well, it would cover any applications, any people that were looking to be indemnified after the policy came into effect.
But for what? Like the last five years, seven years or any thing that comes into effect? Let's say we pass this in February, it would be going forward or you could always go backwards with this.
Well, I think someone's open to come and ask for indemnification if they fall within the, the criteria under the policy, they could come and ask and. Um, like I say, if it's eight years ago, well, then maybe council would be prepared to be, if it was a discretionary one, maybe council would be prepared to do something for that far back. I mean, I'm sure you probably know if there's anything like that out there, um, that goes that far back or there'd be a way of, of knowing that, you know.
And is there a resolution built in to it that? Before anything happens, um. It has to be, um. Like there has to be a council resolution passed, you know, or it go forward? I didn't really find that in.
For this policy to go forward?
Yeah.
Or to, for a resolution after the policy's in place?
Yeah, like if, yeah, after, so if they would put.
Yeah. So if it's in place, then they would, council would be referring to the policy and resolving to reimburse. Um, the certain person, you know, the employee or whomever, um, a certain amount, whatever council finds it to be reasonable.
And that would fall back to the section three in the municipal where we could. It's all decided, it's all partial or none sort of thing or?
Uh, Counselor Schlecker, I believe the basic rule in the municipal act is council can only act by bylaw or resolution. A resolution would have to be passed by council.
Before any funding or decision.
Before we can do anything, a resolution, council can only act by resolution or by bylaw.
Okay. Thank you.
If I have one question of Counselor Schlecker, what are you referencing? What is section three of the municipal act you're referencing?
Uh, when the lady was talking, she said that section three gives the council, uh, according to the municipal act. Council has the right to decide compensation be fully partial or not.
Yeah, that was paragraph, paragraph three of the, of the draft, um, policy.
Okay.
Yeah, not section three of the municipal act. It's section, that's paragraph three of the policy. Yeah. That's what I was referring to.
Okay. Any further comments or questions by council? Okay. Anything further, Ms. Collins?
No, I don't have anything further unless there's more questions.
Okay. Thank you so much for attending the meeting tonight and clarifying a lot of the this policy. Great work on that policy, by the way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is the council reports. Thank you all for submitting reports. Does anybody have any questions on the reports? Hearing and seeing none, we move on to management reports. Um, does anyone, they're all attached to the agenda. Does anyone have any questions on the management reports? I just want to thank everyone for all the great job, and again, done on the reports. Um, under old business. Oh, I'm sorry. I can't see anybody in the audience. I mean, in chambers. Does anybody have any, uh, questions on management reports? Okay, moving on, under old business bylaw number four, three, seven, seven, or bylaw schedule B, committee appointments. I ask this be put back on the agenda after last, uh, the December 10th meeting. Um, because I have a statement to make and there will be no council debate. I took into consideration mo, all the comments made at the December 10th council meeting. And I also reviewed it again this morning on YouTube. Firstly, I wish to remind council of our org bylaw number four, seven, seven. Section eight point six. The responsibility of a member appointed pursuant to subsection eight, sub one shall include, A. As requested by council to report the actions of council to the external organization. B, to participate as a member of the external organization is set forth in the bylaws of such external organization. C, to report to council on the activities of the external or, or, organization. And D, to provide council with information concerning issues arising. With respect to the external organization through committee reports given at the last council meeting of the month. Committee reports shall be filed with administration two days prior to the publishing of the agenda. So as to form a part of the agenda, council members shall read the reports of each member of council. And if questions arise, they shall be addressed at the council meeting. That's directly taken from bylaw four, three, seven, seven, which was passed unanimously. At the last council meeting, I was accused of bullying and harassment by Counselor Hunt. Which I have found to be most disrespectful and unwarranted. I was further threatened with the code of conduct. To be clear, keeping the best interests of residents in mind. Being accountable to residents and following a bylaw does not and was not, quote. An invisible form of bullying and was not, quote. An engineered harassment because of an alleged personal vendetta against this council member. To be clear, keeping the best interests of residents in mind, being accountable to residents. And following a bylaw does not warrant such a threat. It was also claimed that I have a personal vendetta against Counselor Hunt. As I'm the only one asking questions of committee reports. Um, I have always kept the best interests of residents in mind, being accountable and following a bylaw again, does not warrant such. Such a threat. I note on today's agenda, Counselor Hunt, you have provided report in more detail. So council is informed and I thank you for that. And after much thought and listening to all, everything, the comments that were made at the December 10th meeting. I've made one change and that is to the Selkirk weed board. With Counselor Schlecker staying as number one and Counselor Mandor as number two. To rely on a change of signing authorities as the reason for no change to a committee is not reasonable. Signing authorities are changed all the time. And I also, new members of council also need some experience. So with that, thank you. And the committees are attached on the, um, agenda. We have no new business. Now we have in camera.
I'd like to comment on that, please.
There's no debate on this, Counselor Hunt.
You, you get to make a comment. How is that fair that I don't get to rebut to your comments that what, what you had just said? Cause the comments in, the comments. Were surrounded about myself and about what I had said about filing a code of conduct. And I'd like to say about some of the things you said about the reports. You said several times in last meeting that I don't file reports, that P M T wasn't on the, the report. I have the committee reports in black and white in front of me here. It even says here on April 18th, 2024, attended Netley Grassmere, Willow Creek. Integrated Waterment Management Plan, P M T, management meeting, previous minutes and public engagements submitted. And I have the minutes here, another copy of them that was submitted several times in here. Going back to 2022, copies of your report and my report with the same format. Just, just a, a one line of what we had attended. Show me in, in bylaw where it says about how we produce and how we come across with. A report, a committee re, a committee report. So there's five different committee reports in here that have the P M T on it. So you said, in your meeting, last meeting, you have never heard me once or seen in my reports once that I had the P M T on my, on my, on my committee reports. Not true. You also, my comment about me being gone for so many months, you have put my personal property in danger. And myself in danger of, of criminal activity. I'd like your comment on that.
I have no comment. I stated at the beginning, you said a lot of information. That's all on the tape of December 10th. There was no debate. I made a statement. Thank you. Next item we have is in camera. Motion that council move in camera at six, 13 P M. To discuss matters that are in preliminary stages and respecting which discussion in public could prejudice the municipality's ability. To carry out its activities and negotiations as well as legal and personnel issues. And be it further resolved that the members of council agreed to keep in confidence. A matter is discussed at a meeting that is close to the public under section one, fifty-two, three. And that the committee decides to keep confidential until the matter is discussed at a meeting of the council or at a. Or of a committee conducted in public. Could I have a mover, please? Uh, Counselor Mandor, second or? Deputy Mayor, uh, Dornbus, all in favor? Carrie, we are now camera. Thanks, Braden.
One?
Motion to move out of in camera at six, forty-one P M. Could I have a mover, please?
Counselor Schlecker?
Second or? Counselor Mandor, all in favor? Carrie? Next item is the adjournment. Um. Be it resolved, may the co, me, committee, the whole meeting be adjourned at six, forty-two P M. Could I have a mover, please?
So moved.
Counselor Feeblecorn, second or? Counselor Schlecker? All in favor? Before we end the meeting, Braden, please, um, wish everyone a very happy holiday season. Um, it's very inclement highways out there. I've had some calls from residents. I hear it's pretty icy. So everyone, please be careful driving home. And again, Merry Christmas to you and your families.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas.